That are required to satisfy that ordinance. So I think even that concept plan that was reviewed, I can't remember when it was exactly.
That was well back.
But I don't know that we had thorough, we have really contemplated how the buffer yard would play into that.
I don't think it got that deep. I just, we didn't want that big apartment building on commercial land.
Yeah, I think we were less concerned with the commercial land. If anything, the feedback we gave on doing the previous surface limit on a per flat basis was received very positively. The issue with that concept plan was the, we didn't want the apartment building in the commercial. Um, yeah, sorry, where was it? So we have the, uh, how would the council like to proceed regarding a comprehensive use table? We floated this idea of moving away from having uses outlined in each district and having it just, having it clear and consolidated in a single table. I found examples of cities that did just the table, did the, did it the way that we currently did it, and then I found a couple of examples that do both. I would recommend doing one or the other, but I do like the table. Uh, what existing uses should be removed or consolidated? Uh, for example, should keeping of animals continue to be allowed in the business park district? Couldn't really find another example of where keeping of animals was allowed in the more urban, commercial, industrial districts. Planning commission, when they talked about it, didn't want to prevent creative uses that might have some live animal component. Like we're starting to see goat yoga, things like that. So I think that that, but they don't want to necessarily prevent that either. So there wasn't a huge desire on the planning commission to remove that use, um, but we certainly can.
I've done goat yoga and the goats prefer to do it in a rural environment.
We don't want that permitted.
I think there was, there was all, there, there also potentially, like if there was a, uh, not necessarily in the business park, but I think a restaurant could go in the business park, but yet there was a restaurant user that wanted to have their own eggs and have a couple, like had a chicken coop or something. Um, they didn't want to prevent that by removing it as an allowed use, uh, but again, we, we certainly can. Um, the likelihood of it being in the business park is probably pretty low.
Maybe a CUP route for that limited type of like chicken.
Well, we could be, we could, uh, if, if incorporate it into a, a business, well, yeah, I think we could figure something out like that, yeah. Does city council see any uses that could be considered retail in general? I think a lot of our uses in our commercial district could just be retail services, professional services, financial service. We could really get that down. But if there are specific uses we want to have called out separately, such as cannabis, which would be called out separately, uh, liquor stores. What, what are the uses that we're concerned about that we want to see not grouped into just a general retail umbrella?
Do we need this, like cannabis as an example? Do we need to do that? Because we've already kind of done the inverse of, we've stated where it can be. Do we need to say where it can't?
I, I did see like one city that, one or two cities that started to list prohibited uses. I just think that starts to get a little crazy because it's hard to contemplate every use that you're not allowing. Um, but I would say for the purposes of a use table or for any of our district language, however we decide to do it, we would have cannabis use called out as a separate retail use because we have that higher standard that we wouldn't just have for like a Walgreens, for example. Um, although at the pharmacy at Walgreens, we might have a higher standard for, if it's a drive through. Um, and that is fairly typical that the retail is allowed by right and then retail with a drive through is a conditional use permit. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Let me get my agenda. What existing uses should be removed? Uh, and then how do we want to update the business park district? We had talked about potentially removing some uses on that one, so I need guidance on that to bring back a draft. And what uses should be added? Uh, how does the council want to incorporate additional agricultural uses throughout the city? We talked about potentially wanting to see some urban farms. I provided an example table because again, I looked, actually at all six of these cities and I was really surprised there really was not a lot about urban farming. And then I even, I did actually look at four additional cities, um, that I thought might have something and there was very limited information. So I kind of just made up my own thing, um, using chat GPT to be very honest. But that, that's the table that's in the packet as a starting point. If we wanted to try to allow for vertical farming, community gardens of it. Uh, just trying to make sure that we're not prohibiting any of that. And then what, oh, is there a desire to add data processing centers? Sports and entertainment venues seem to be a conversation that has come up multiple times. I believe you, as the council, most of you on council, I did see a concept plan. It was met very favorably. It just, they had, there was a partnership aspect that that's why it didn't go through because we didn't want to partner with them. But maybe we call that out as an allowed use in either our business park or, uh, in like industrial district. Brewery taprooms, brew pubs, craft breweries and or micro distilleries are, seem to be a hot topic. I provided a little bit of, of, an article link on that too, to kind of talk about what the different uses are. Seems to be that a lot of cities do allow these and we allow a tavern and that's all we really see. I think we could, um, definitely. Yeah, I, I.
Open it up. I agree. Wine, wineries, that kind of stuff, or the, the mean?
Um, should a setback requirement be added to parking ramps from low density residential areas? Keep in mind, we already have that higher, um, setback from residential, but we could add, add a higher one for parking ramps. And should standards be added to recycling facilities and lumberyards or should these uses be removed? Again, I provided some data for lumberyards and specifically, um, there can be benefits of, uh, sho- shopping at a more local lumberyard than our typical big box lumberyard. So a little unclear if we would want to prevent that. There might be, um, some benefits to that, um, but.
On something like that. The, uh, hardware store with a lumberyard out back kind of deal, is that what you're trying to, or I know what you're thinking of?
Yeah.
Options, I know most hardware stores that get chunks of lumber and aisle nineteen up against the back corner next to plumbing and stuff.
So we have, we have lumberyards, building material sales. This was one of the uses that in our very early discussions, we said, maybe we should remove that. Do we really want that? And I, and to be clear, it's not allowed in our northeast district right now. Um, there were cities that allow them, uh, and then there were some cities that only allowed indoor sales. And then there were a, a number of cities that also didn't allow it.
What about something like a, uh, sorry, like a tractor supply where you get vehicles outside, it's fenced in, there's posts, there's tanks, there's all those kind of things.
Right now, we allow auto equipment, um.
Not in the northeast, I don't think.
Not in the northeast.
None of these are in the northeast.
We do allow, uh, it would be considered if it's auto equip, it's like auto boat and equipment sales or rental or repair. And we do allow that in, um, a number of our districts.
Like a, a rental store, a, a hardware that's a rental store or a, a tractor supply that rents out.
Yeah, so we could.
Mowers, aerators, all that stuff, and then has posts and stuff.
And, and, and I guess that's part of the question is, is the concern is we don't, do we not want it outside? Are we okay with it being outside in one district over another, or do we just want to see it, it's okay to sell it? But we want you to do it inside. I think that's part of the question.
We're, we're coming up with something.
Yep.
The, that. What tractor supply does to corral everything and, and block a lot of it off with the fencing and the pylons and the wrought iron fence and all of that stuff, you don't see that stuff.
So you're okay with outdoor sales as long as it's completely screened?
Something like it, a lot, that type of screening and stuff.
Sure, no, that makes sense.
I'm a, I'm a huge.
CUP, sure. Well, I think most of our outdoor components do have a CUP, so we would keep that. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
To, to go back to a couple of the ones you talked about, parking ramps, I would say maybe have a scaling, um, setback depending on height.
Okay.
So I don't know what the number would specifically be, but at a certain height for every, however many feet taller it is.
Yeah, our GMU has that already, and I think that is the, that is the district that we called out, I think, for parking. Maybe DMU too, when I think about it. Um, but yeah, I think that's entirely reasonable. We could definitely look at that.
Sounds good. What do you guys think about recycling facilities? I feel like we kind of had that conversation recently.
Yeah, we had it pretty good.
Let's not do that.
To be clear, we were talking, so I think the recycling facilities, the way that we currently define it, we're talking about, uh, we're not talking about what was previously talked about in terms of the concept plan that was in front of us. I would say that's currently, like the composting facility is not currently allowed anywhere. Um, and then, yeah, we could also remove recycling facilities too if that's desired. So just to be clear, it's not the same thing as the compost facility that we're reviewing.
Have we had any interest in someone doing something like that?
Compost facilities, recycling facilities, not yet. Cause I haven't really spoken to anyone on the recycling facility.
Recycling, I'm not real crazy about, we turn into a industrial park and they're recycling automobile parts off of.
Junkyards, yeah.
That kind of stuff. I, junkyard is a whole nother conversation.
Industrial and business park and GMU.
Anything like that outside is not, we, I don't want anything like that. They can do it inside.
We could, oh, you'd be okay with a recycling facility that's entirely indoors? Okay, I got it. I got it. I got it. Very clear.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I could say.
More okay than it being outdoors, but.
Think of the garbage truck volume.
I was thinking more like auto recycling where they, but I, I don't know anybody that make enough money to recycle automobiles inside one great big building and such and keep everything inside and stuff, so no. No recycling on my mind either.
Okay, that's a hard remove. I can do that. All right.
Do we, do we have the, I'm sorry, do we have the ability to say no also to Hennepin County, if all of a sudden they said you're gonna, we're gonna put this here and that's the way it's gonna be and stuff?
I would assume if we don't allow it in district, we would have, as far as do that to my knowledge. Now, if there's some legal change such as a state statute, oh, yeah, unless you, okay.
Yep.
Unless there's a state statute that puts in place that recycling facilities have to be allowed in at least one district, then we would have may have to reopen that conversation. But as of right now, not.
I say we tackle that when it doesn't happen.
Right, when it doesn't happen. That sounds great. Um, okay, so lumberyards.
I, I did have one that was not really on this list that I wanted to get out just before I forgot. For industrial and, and business park, um, I was doing some research and I saw in Dayton and a handful of other cities, they have some code language around a ratio of, I've seen two different versions, um, a ratio of loading dock parking area to warehouse build, building size. Or a ratio of building or dock doors to building size. And I feel like the dock doors discussion has kind of held us up on a few of the concept plan reviews. Uh, how many and it not really being known, and maybe if we had some guidelines on that, it'd be helpful. Dayton for sure had one for the parking area for dock doors or like for, for loading
Okay.
to the building. I think it was point three five to one ratio, and I don't know, I think we'd probably want a smaller ratio than that. Um, and I think we'd want a, a lower number in business park for sure than industrial.
Okay.
And I can, I have a list at home, uh, of the other, of some other cities that I found it in, both in Minnesota and just across the country. I can show you that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Can I just add one additional thought there? I've seen some business parks where all of the dock doors are entirely internal and there's just like a narrow, I don't know, fifty foot wide access to get into the interior bay and that's where all the dock doors are. I feel like with that kind of a design, you wouldn't necessarily need to restrict it because the outward facing part is all like commercial office. There's no industrial factory back door that's really visible.
Unless you're just worried about the general truck traffic and the type of user that might come with more dock doors. But might help mitigate it.
So maybe, maybe there's a ratio for when there's an interior bay versus when it's visible too. Maybe that's something we're looking for.
Jeremy, I, I feel like you've mentioned some stuff on the windows before and some of the aesthetics like that. Have you?
I think that was for Dean.
I, the, the windows on, on an industrial building are a, a lot more pleasing than just a whole brick or a whole concrete wall. Um, you talked about that as far as opaque and those kind of things. I would say not reflective, but because I don't want all of a sudden a neighbor calling up, the sun shining on the window and it's reflected in my house and stuff, something that.
It's like a non-reflective glass material.
If that's possible.
And, cause they might not want windows in their work areas. But yeah, just something to break up the facade.
Yep. I mean, that's, that would be.
Ratio where how often, how many.
So some kind of glass requirement. Okay, I can look at that. Like I said, there were quite a few examples that had something along those lines.
Just something to break up the mass concrete wall.
I think like the, reflecting back on that first packet that came from FabCon, like the brick look. There were a lot of them that were like a stamped or an etched brick appearance, but it was still like a tip up kind of a structure. But those looked pretty attractive.
Painted.
They look, I don't know if it's actually paint, but there's some kind of a pigment there.
I think, I think like a Menards is that way where it's a tipped up, but it's got the, the brick stamped into it. I, I, it's just one of those.
Yeah.
Still a big color building.
But they had some that were, they looked like they were actually, you know,
Rock, limestone rock.
Brick constructed, like credit union type buildings in that packet. I thought that kind of a finish would be less of a concern than the normal tip up that you would see in those industrial parks.
For a business park, you think, you, you okay with that? Okay, that's good to know. Um, so this is part. Okay, with the brick tip up. Did you prefer that over the smooth tip up for the business park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Personally.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I had a thought on the data processing request or potential.
To be clear, this would probably be very unlikely. We, cause they, my understanding and talking with people who are wanting to cite a data processing center, they do need a fairly significant amount of land. Uh, I don't think it'd be impossible on seventy acres, uh, but they're typically looking for a little bit more. But again, just making sure we're not stepping in our own way and I'll let you go. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've just heard anecdotally, like Bitcoin farming and places like that, where they just generate a lot of air conditioning noise. So if we were to allow it, I would think we would want it to be a CUP and maybe have some requirements around ambient noise and that sort of thing, maybe EMF.
Okay, I could, I could look at that.
In, in the western part of Chaska where I live, they've, it's really become a, a heavy data center, lot, lots of them being built. And the most recent one was very controversial to the neighbors, uh, because of the size of it, much taller than the other ones. And so the berm that they've built in order to try and mitigate the sound is also really interesting. And so now when you once looked over fields, now you're looking at a fifty foot berm.
I mean, it almost seems like that's the kind of use that should go underground because it's easier to cool, but.
True.
That'd be a new sliding hill, wouldn't it? We could call it Mount Corcoran or something. Public Works could get some snowmog, new making machines and all kinds of stuff.
We're, we're less attractive for, for those options too, just in terms of where electric is located. Uh, you know, they, they pulled all those utilities in a way in Chaska that it's been very easy to do that. And they have the public utility in Chaska that also helps consolidate the solution. That would be more challenging for a.
Under a stormwater pond, water cooler.
Yeah. Geothermal.
Um, let's see what else is.
Do it in the watershed. I had a couple of items for the use table. I, I do like the use table. I feel like it's much easier to track than looking at eighty different pages of code. Um, the third page, page four oh eight, health clubs and fitness centers and health clubs and fitness centers less than five thousand square feet. Um, I think those could belong in C two as well. And, and DMU and GMU.
And then, um, sometimes we, we did speak with someone about a health club and fitness center in the C one fairly recently. And the, I think, I think it's five thousand square feet and that was even prohibited and we weren't talking about a very big site. Um, so I'm wondering if we are concerned about the size?
I'm not. I mean, I would, I would have them as permitted, honestly, in those.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Like, can you give me an idea of like how big five thousand square feet is compared to like some of the warehouse plans that we look at? Five thousand square feet sounds really small to me.
So like the warehouse, um, the two buildings that we were looking at in the northeast site were like a hundred and little over a hundred thousand square feet for one of them and about two hundred and forty thousand square feet for the other. So five thousand is pretty small.
Is really small. Like I'd rather see a health club.
It's like a, a.
Like a Walgreens would be like s- eight thousand square feet or so, if that helps.
So five thousand seems too small.
Picture.
So this is four thousand square feet, just as part of the Napa building.
Yeah, that's teeny.
Yeah, yeah. And so it was, it was on this site, someone was looking in between the two, it was slightly over five thousand. So also it's just like. Yeah, so, um, it ends up, yeah, anyway, so I think if we remove the size limit and then just make sure we're allowing it in commercial and mixed use. Okay.
You mentioned earlier those, like the type of facilities, I don't think we answered this, um, like sports type facilities.
Yeah, the entertainment and sports venue.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested in expanding where that could go. Whether it's industrial or maybe even business park or for sure GMU.
What does sports venue mean? Is that like axe throwing or is that like David Buster's mini golf?
Outdoor soccer, indoor soccer or volleyball courts.
David Buster's is a restaurant.
I would love a top, absolutely.
Tennis is a fading sport.
Um, so sports venue.
Hey, stop saying that. I'm a tennis player.
I disagree.
So Jessica, Jessica said.
I know and I tell her that every time.
I, I love poking around that one.
So the ones that we've been speaking with have been, for example, there's been like a, an association for basketball that wants to do a basketball only gym. So it's not the same thing as like a health club where anyone can really buy a membership and now they have access to it. It's, this is our association. We have people coming just for basketball training and for, and then we, we've seen, um, I forgot what the one, what was the one that was in the northeast? Was it baseball? Okay, there's been a couple different. There's been one for golf, having a be more golf focused and it, but they have like a really large master plan for a facility. Um, and then there's, and, and some of them do have components where the public are available, but sometimes they're a little bit more based on their membership too. Um, and I think, I'm trying to think, the baseball one that did come in front of you as a concept. That one included not only the baseball fields, but there was an indoor field that they also included. And then they also wanted to include a, like a restaurant or kind of clubhouse. Yeah. And so that's not really a health fitness club in terms of like a gym. It's more of a, a venue. It's a, and it's an attraction to some extent.
Like a Pints and Paddles and.
Yeah, Pints and Paddles.
And Nipple Grove.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, okay, um, we can look at that. I'm trying to think, like the axe throwing, those kind of things, I would consider it more along the line of a, there, it.
That's just crazy. That's not a, that's not.
It's more of a restaurant tavern concept.
Tavern with a little bit of a component, but I wouldn't, I would say the main use is not necessarily, um.
Axe throwing.
It's not the sports that there is like the axe throwing component, um, where it's a little different, I would say.
Like a turp dome.
I would do a better job defining it if we were to go down this road.
What, what is the, um, what's the tax revenue implications of allowing something like a eighty acres of baseball fields versus eighty acres of general municipal development?
So the, my understanding is the more building you have, probably the higher value the, the acreage will be. Um, so we would, we could definitely have some standards though for a sports venue that they would have to have a building. We, then you already kind of do that. We say that a lot of uses require a building, um, with some exceptions. Obviously a park is a little different, treated a little differently. Doesn't necessarily have to have a building. Um, so I think we could probably handle that as a CUP standard is that there needs to be some kind of, uh, indoor component. I'm trying to think, but yeah, I, I, I couldn't tell you without looking at it a bit more and having a specific situation. But if we were to have something that just took up all of our general mixed use and it was just eighty acres of, uh, ball field, then yeah, our taxes aren't going to be as high as it would be if that had been developed into warehouses, for example.
So I, I kind of struggle with the sports venue just because I feel like it's a very, hopefully they wouldn't want to put something in those districts anyway. Um, but it feels like that's a better fit for a rural part of the city versus.
Now that you say that.
Commercial core.
Batting cages, I mean, there's been a lot of those things that have gone in the Pints and Paddles batting cages.
I had a mini.
All those kind of indoor stuff.
And, and when we looked at the business plan, it was.
That, that wasn't big. That wasn't big.
What about like the Blaine Super Rink? You've got like the hockey arenas inside. A lot of people go to the Blaine Super Rink for hockey because it's not just the ranks, but it's the training. It's, it's a bunch of pieces and then they also have all the soccer fields outside.
So that's a state facility.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would say that.
Little different one.
So it's tax exempt?
Yes, it's hard to tax exempt.
Is it?
Okay.
That whole thing is.
The Blaine Super Rink is?
Well, ice rinks usually are.
It's run by a, a state federation. They only have one employee. So Pete Carlson's the only employee that works for the state and then all the rest of them work for the different subcomponents of it. Like there's a restaurant there and there's, it's, it's a really interesting and weird structure. And, and in that case, uh, they've got serious maintenance problems, so.
To me, we, I, I don't necessarily have to see it in, in business park or that, I guess anywhere specific, but I would like to maybe try to find a way to have a enclosed, like, like with a building requirement so that it's not just fields that are open.
But you'll end up with like a golf clubhouse and it'll be worth a hundred and fifty grand and you'll get ten thousand dollars in tax revenue on your forty acre parcel.
What type of, of place would that be?
Well, like the baseball example, I mean.
That was supposed to be a big building.
I think that would have been valued incredibly high.
Really?
Yeah.
That would have been a big building.
Yeah, the, the master plane for the, master plane, sorry, I'm getting tired of it. Master concept plan that they provided, the building was pretty significant, but they also, and they also wanted to have maybe even a hotel component. It was, it was a very significant plan. Um, but to your point, how do we define it so that it, it isn't just fields? Um, so I, uh, I don't know the answer to that right now. And I'll say entertainment could also just be like a movie theater too. I don't think we really, we allow theater and it's not spelt American English. I think that's really funny. Um, we spell it British in our code. We allow it in our downtown excuse and like, yeah, and nowhere else. So does that necessarily make sense? Maybe it does, um, but those are just some of the.
What, what happens in this? Just tell me, it's not gonna matter. What happens if we start getting schools in our city and those kind of things?
Like private schools or?
Anybody who wants to build a school and they're buying property and do that kind of stuff.
Only public school really could be Rockford.
I'm just, I'm asking.
Um, are you asking where they're allowed or are we asking, we're concerned? Okay.
Uh, it's not part of this conversation, I'm assuming.
It'd be public institutional.
We do allow them all in residential. We allow them in institution. We don't have a lot of open institutional. Um, I believe we allow them.
They would probably be coming in and rezoning a site.
There would be no tax on those, um, either way.
Correct, yes.
Nope, nevermind. Don't look any deeper. I just.
I think it's mostly our residential districts that we would allow it. And I think that makes sense because you, you want them located near the kids that they would serve.
We'd have, we'd, we'd have more city parks next to schools.
We do allow for like vocational schools as a conditional use, if I remember correctly, uh, which makes sense. Yeah, uh, trade schools, seminaries and other higher educational facilities are allowed in our light industrial as an option, so that makes sense. I, I remember in Eagan, there's a couple like smaller type colleges that are in the, uh, industrial district, so that makes sense.
Was grocery stores brought up somewhere?
Yeah, grocery stores, we allow them, I think, not in our C one. Uh, we allow them in our C two. Our C two is meant to be more of, uh, serving beyond the boundaries of necessarily Corcoran. Our C two is pretty much entirely along one oh one. Um, and so it's, the idea is that the service area is going to be a little bit beyond Corcoran. Um, and they have major roadways, it's going to be able to serve motorists, whereas our neighborhood commercial is more like where Napa is located. It's a little bit smaller, so I think that's why grocery stores aren't in there, but maybe we should allow for markets or some sort. It just seems like why would we not want to purge food?
I'd be open to some.
Some kind of market.
Something like that, a farmer's market, something, and also opening it up to maybe some of the other districts that are, are bigger. I know for a fact, I just from someone I know that builds grocery stores, they call, uh, had interest in somewhere on that thirty corridor.
So maybe in our business park allowing for a larger grocery store.
That or the GMU.
Okay.
Does it make sense to keep the fifty thousand square foot limit on grocery stores?
Grocery stores? I guess I don't know what the going size of grocery stores is really, but.
I think Targets are like eighty thousand square feet or so right now.
Yeah, but how does that get classified, it's not all grocery store.
Okay, so. Traditional supermarkets are thirty to fifty thousand square feet, I don't know exactly what that means, large supermarkets such as Kroger are fifty to eighty. Warehouse club stores like Costco or Sam's Club are a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand. Small neighborhood grocery stores are between ten to twenty five thousand, something that's more of the Aldi model, have to look that up exactly. And then convenience stores are about five thousand square feet or less.
I mean, I think the only ones would be, anything you'd be concerned about would, at least wanting to have another step of review would be the, the big Costcos.
The warehouse.
Warehouse types, the other ones, I think.
Everything else is.
So maybe have, have another row with conditional use above fifty thousand square feet.
Sure.
Or seventy.
And would that really be any retail above fifty thousand square feet, we want that conditional?
Big box retail.
Okay.
They're not building a ton of it anymore.
Great.
But you never know.
That could change.
Okay.
The other thing, I feel like, I feel like we're, we're, we've always talked about wanting to get some restaurants in town, but we're, it seems pretty limited where we allow them.
Yeah.
We allow them, I think in C one and C two, uh, let me look at.
And DMU and GMU.
Yeah.
Do we allow it in DMU and GMU?
Without drive through.
Yeah, without drive. And the drive through is usually a conditional use permit, um, so.
Is it in GMU?
GMU I think does allow for a conditional use permit. Where's the drive through? Drive through lanes permitted, drive through business. This is why we gotta clean it up, because we call uses slightly different even across the district, um, so drive through business, we allow C one, C two and GMU. And then drive through lanes, serving permitted or conditional uses except for restaurants, um, are allowed in the DMU. So it looks like we wouldn't allow for a drive through coffee shop in the DMU, but we could in the GMU, obviously. And we did with hope, technically, we, we gave them as part of the PUD approval, the ability to put up to two thousand.
The other thing is in a PUD you could.
Yeah, yeah, you could be a little bit more flexible with the use.
And, and that's really what a traditional PUD is more for, is the combining of different uses. So that's something I think to keep in mind, but. I guess I'm good with where, where you allow it, it's not as restrictive as I thought.
The, um, public open space plaza. Is only in GMU, should we also potentially allow that in the DMU?
Tina wrote it, okay, well, we're gonna blame Tina.
This is a principally use, it's allowed as an accessory use, I think.
In the GMU it is.
In the GMU.
But we have the, I think the broader category of other typical uses, so I would say you could allow it anywhere that typical use accessory to something if you wanted.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say that's one we probably just don't even need to call out, but we could, but, um. Especially because of some of our master corridor planning, we require some type of public space.
If there's a viable path to, to doing it when we, when it arrives, I think that's fine. Other than that, it's in that period, um, we talked about kind of expanding the, um. Hubs and wineries and all that stuff earlier, did you need any guidance on? I think my suggestion would be we see what you come up with in terms of where those best fit. I, I don't know, depends on, that, that's a pretty broad range of.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do.
Like to see them more feasible.
Yeah, I'll do a bit more digging on some of that, um, I would love to come up with just like a category and then we just define it to include all of those. Um, and figure out where that might make sense, but yeah, as far as, I know, for example, there was a micro distillery that got approved. In Brooklyn Park while I was there that went into their industrial area and it, and it seemed like a pretty decent use to fit there.
I'd be open to that.
So.
One other item real quick, the outdoor seating accessory to a restaurant is only currently listed as AU under GMU. Seems like maybe the DMU could have that as well.
Yeah, feels like it should have that. Right?
Yeah.
Just making those accessory uses and those mixed use districts just consistent.
Yeah.
Pet grooming and kennel, I feel like I don't mind the use, but we have a astonishing number of pet, the related businesses in Corcoran.
Second only the car related business.
It's impressive, it's like, we have like four of them. I like dogs, so I don't mind that.
Yeah, we know it.
Yeah. Always the, would you like to live next to one with dogs barking all day, yeah, that doesn't bother me one bit, I love dogs.
Well, they don't bark in some of them.
That's true, they are, they're pretty well around here.
I don't receive a lot of, I don't, I receive complaints for the dog businesses.
I haven't heard many either, um, they seem to run it well and good service to have in town.
I know, I know when I go by the one that exists up on Stee Road, when I'm. In a, in a place you can hear him barking and we were told that it's a no bark.
Of something that the neighborhood really pushed for, the neighborhood really, really wanted, and I haven't heard complaints.
Yeah, the neighbors did really want it, I think, nevermind.
Any of those places, the dogs are gonna bark no matter what anybody tells us for.
Oh, I, I, I.
I don't know that we need to expand the uses, I think, my, my point was that we're good on that, in that category, it's kind of a funny factoid. Yeah, it can get rough. It can get rough, but I'm, he'll be here all week, folks.
Can we add tailoring services to C one as permitted?
Yeah, I was thinking of trying to group in like barber, like personal services and maybe tailor, who would go underneath that. So I would, basically add, put personal services as the use and then I would define personal services with some examples such as tailoring.
Okay, um, I see signs is regulated by city code, just in TCR?
I don't know why it's only called out, oh, probably because technically. Technically residential don't really have too many opportunities for signs, so I don't know why TCR.
But maybe we want to expand it up, I know a gentleman came in last meeting about a sign for Saint Therese and. I've heard some chatter about some of the other businesses potentially interested in, in some sort of group signage or something like that, I don't know if you.
I feel like, that's a, so, I don't, we have a whole sign section of code, I think that would be a slightly different update. If, if we wanna do that, we can.
Tackle that a different time.
Um, yeah, I just think it's a different part of.
It can also be tackled, tackled through a PUD amendment.
Yes, yes.
Have another one, um, the warehousing and indoor storage used in conjunction with offices or manufacturing facilities. I would suggest because of the discussions we've had around, you know, eighty percent warehouse, twenty percent office to run the warehouse. What if we strike offices and replace that with research, so it would be with research or manufacturing facilities. Rather than with office and manufacturing facilities.
Typically, they have offices though, um, so.
But what that allows you to avoid is a case where essentially it's a distribution system with an office for the people who like. Run the cranes and manage the deliveries, if you tie it to a research and development process or a manufacturing process. Now it's more of a real business.
Okay.
And if that's right, we wanted to go, maybe there'd be some useful language in Plymouth's code.
Okay.
Since they have a lot of that type of use.
So tie it to manufacturing and research.
What did their mayor say, it was, they were the R and D capital of.
Yeah.
Country or something, there is a lot of med tech in the R and D in Plymouth, more than you think.
Okay, so just to re.
Anything we missed?
Yeah.
Just in the interest of time, we've got some folks that have been sitting here guessing for.
I think that's a lot for now.
Um, let me just, um, make sure I've heard everything correctly, so how does council want to handle a height related transition from residential areas? Do we want to increase the setback, do we want a sliding setback like we have in the GMU, do we want a CUP for a certain height of building?
Sliding.
A sliding like we have in the GMU.
I like sliding.
That works for me.
Okay, um, sliding, like GMU. We want a transparency, not, or transparency or glass requirement added. Um, to the I one district overall, not just the northeast district. Did we want to add anything from our northeast district just to our I one district? Just wanted to be, but when we adopted the northeast district, it was kind of, we were.
Prepping for.
We kind of said we're gonna try some things out here, see how they go, and then we want to apply on a larger scale we can, um, so that would, it, this would be an opportunity to do that in our.
Maybe the updated screening requirements for. Business park in, in I one, um, citywide.
The updated screening.
Like the, so like, the screening that we have in the northeast now amended with some of, there was changes in that, right? With the loading areas.
Oh, okay, the, okay, screening requirements, it's interesting.
We'll just have that be uniform.
Okay, screening requirements. Make uniform in I one districts. Cause the business park is in that, yeah, um, and then.
Do we skip B?
How would the city council like to proceed with architectural standards or window requirement?
Yeah.
Um, so I had heard that we liked some kind of glass requirement that would be anti-reflective. It doesn't necessarily need to be windows.
Or even a full, a fake window.
Something like, something that looks, yeah, kind of glass or a full window, some type of transparency requirement.
Thank you.
We like that, okay, yep, so I have that transparency glass, but anti-reflective. Um, and then as far as should architectural standards be added to I one that were from the northeast, um, we. Do we want the materials in the northeast or okay with some of the I one districts having less of a material standard than what we have in the northeast? Keeping in mind that northeast is kind of that gateway into Corcoran for the most part, that's why we wanted the higher material standard. But, so, and we're, right now, we still have Corcoran, what was Corcoran Farms is still technically I one. I know we've had some discussion about potentially changing that, and then we have some light industrial on the, um, southwest corner along fifty five. That's where we would have.
That's already been.
Uh, not all of it. Yeah, there, there is a portion that's preliminary and so this wouldn't necessarily apply to that, but there are some other parcels that would be light industrial as well.
What's the official zoning out by Public Works Building on ten?
The, that is rural commercial.
Rural commercial, okay.
And that, and it, and it kind of is, the, so it's, the Public Works is public institution, right now the outlot surrounding that is still rural residential. There's been a lot of talk about it moving to commercial rural, and then immediately north of that, that's when you get into the, um, rural commercial. And for rural commercial, we do allow for a little bit of less of a higher architectural standard out there currently, so.
Would we ever look at changing that?
Will you tell me?
I feel like since we're, we're looking at the other zoning or, uh, architectural standards for like industrial. It probably wouldn't hurt to just take a look at that too and just maybe in, increase it a little bit, just, I feel like it's. Missing the mark on what we're trying to incorporate and what we want to have in Corcoran. I love the Public Works Building, I think Public Works Building is a really nice building.
Be open to seeing what you can look on that.
So I think, I can look, the, there's one specific, like in our building materi, uh, non-residential building materials. Was, there's one caveat that gives rural commercial a little bit of a break, um, so it really isn't that much. Um, in terms of what could go in the I one that's not in our northeast district as compared to the rural commercial. Um, I think we could, there may have been a building or two that were constructed without, uh, eaves. And so that can kind of make it look a little interesting, so we can make sure that we have an ease requirement, um, and then I'm trying to.
I'd be fine adding the industrial building requirements to the other sites.
Okay, the northeast industrial to other sites, uh, so then my question for that is how we want to handle tip up for the other sites. Or, uh, uh, we want smooth finish for other sites, or if they're not in the northeast district, are we a bit more open to other forms of tip ups such as the brick? We said that was okay for business park.
I think that'd be okay.
Brick or smooth finish?
Mr. Mayor, given the interest of time, we're gonna redo everything in town here if we don't.
Fair enough.
We will talk about it again.
Yes, I'm just trying to get the information I need to get a draft.
Yep.
I.
Um, okay, so I will try to hurry up here, so how would you like to proceed with the impervious surface limits, we're okay on a per plat basis or per lot basis?
Uh, the per.
Per plat?
Plat, the one you suggested, I think that's fine.
Um, how would this?
Feel free to speak up, I'm, I disagree.
Uh, was there any desire to have meat processing facilities such as the, what we lost when the butcher shop went away?
Seemed like it was really difficult to implement.
It, it, yeah, I might, but I can try to look at it, there, again, I found some meat processing facility and most cities don't allow it and then there was a couple that did.
Open to it if you can find something that works.
Okay.
Yeah.
And. Okay.
Good.
I think that's what I needed, yep, thank you.
All right, I'll send you a couple things too with different code divisions and, um. Whatever else I said I'd send you up, I remember, I've got my notes somewhere, oh, the cities with the different codes.
Oh, sorry, last question, we don't want this in March, right, we want this in April at this point, considering what we have on.
When it works for you. Mr. Mayor, just real quick, I believe.
They're here for Domino's.
Eight is here for, you guys here for Domino's, I'm assuming? You're here for the overweight?
They were here for the discussion on commercial and industrial.
Oh.
Oh, you were here for that, here, I'm trying to hurry us up to get the Domino's, I'm sorry.
I was thinking the same thing.
All right, never mind, I was gonna move Domino's ahead, but.
I was, yeah, okay, but we will move on to, uh, eight A. Which is the overweight vehicle policy discussion, um, and then eight B, which is the Domino's, we'll have a public comment opportunity. Doesn't seem like, uh, these gentlemen are here for that, but, okay, we'll move on to eight A.
Uh, so mayor and council, uh, what's before you is, we just want to get some guidance, the, the key here is that as we have spring load limits. Which are coming up here very soon, uh, our infrastructure is sensitive in a lot of different areas. And we want to ensure that we're making the right decisions to protect our infrastructure and also that we're enforcing in ways that are clear. Communicating in ways that are clear, so that we're protecting it, but also proactively policing it, for lack of a better word. Uh, currently, we don't have, we, we own scales, but we don't have anybody who has been trained as a certification to use those scales. So we're looking at potentially, uh, changing that in the future, but for the near term, what we're wanting feedback on is. Uh, historically, we have gone on with the metro standard, it's important to note that if you look at a latitude map. Corcoran is actually within what would be considered a central district, uh, but the metro standard goes all the way to Wright County. It encompasses a very large area and it's actually grown over the last couple of years. And so, in order to protect our infrastructure, one of the strategies has been to go on with the metro standard and go off with the central standard. Because as the frost moves its way down, one of the challenges that that creates is that, uh, some people don't know that we go on. With the metro standard and off with the central standard, they presume that since we're in the metro, they look at a map, that we're going off with the metro standard.
And it has caused some frustration.
And I know some of you have received some phone calls, so one of the things that I, I want to reassure you is that no matter what guidance you give tonight. There's still gonna be people frustrated and you're still gonna get phone calls, uh, because people who come out here, they're going to hit roads. And they're gonna be posted, whether we go off with the central standard or not, we need to protect our infrastructure. So we're still gonna post limits in order to ensure that the infrastructure is protected.
But option one gives us a little more flexibility on that.
Well, it's, the, the, really the strategy that we're action versus, option one versus option two is how do we communicate what we do? That, that's how I would differentiate, and, and staff can clarify with me here if I misspeak on that. But it communicates clearly that those roads that do not need additional protection, that can go off. that can go off with the metro standard, go off with the metro standard. And those that are not, uh, we would, uh, proactively try and identify on maps and how we communicate that. But people who read maps don't have those problems. It's the people who don't show up and are trying to sneak by uh, or just blatantly didn't know, and, uh, that, they're, they're creating the problem. Uh, another thing, just for your awareness, is statutorily, we're required to let a lot of traffic go through that compromises those standards. So, uh, refuse trucks, you know, garbage trucks are allowed to. If someone needs to get their sewer pumped out, they're allowed to. Uh, statutorily, we can't do anything to restrict those vehicles, and so that is a lot of traffic that hits the roads. We're trying to identify and prevent the traffic that are heavy concrete creep trucks that, uh, have a heavier load than what they're supposed to have, sneaking on the roads. Uh, so with all the development that we have, we're at high risk for, for that happening, uh, heavy loads of other equipment.
And then we get a situation like Trail Haven the other year, when they randomly closed it down because of the Culver failure.
Right.
And the post office decided that they weren't gonna ma- deliver mail. Don't need to get into that, but, um, any?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I'm just curious, how many, how many citations get issued for overweight vehicles?
Uh, I can't speak to the exact number. I know last year we gave out seven permits. So those are the people who are proactively communicating, collaborating with us. It was only seven.
I think there's some requirements in terms of, um, like certification to do so and the equipment to, to do the weighing. That, I don't know.
So, so we, we are partners with the state, who helped us with truck safety training today. Matt, Matt can speak to that a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have a way of knowing because the state patrol also does truck enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, so how many citations were exactly issued is, is unknown. Um, as far as, you know, we have scales and, and that doesn't require a specialized training to be able to operate them as an individual, but to do the more in-depth enforcement and inspections, um, we're considering looking at the offer bringing back our commercial vehicle inspector program that we had in the past. Um, we found that it was the, the amount, the amount of things that we found, especially in commercial vehicles in our community, uh, was pretty, pretty staggering. Um, I think it would be helpful for, for our roadway safety to consider reconstituting that program. And I think there is interest in the department to do that. They're not the only ones that can do overweight enforcement. The other officers can do it once they've gone through the training. I think there's hopefully one coming up in the area, um, but I think we, we have the capacity to do that at a very high level with the non-specialty staff, or I think getting another specialty person back on staff would be helpful in raising the bar for the entire department.
To, to be clear, the timing of this, this would be identifying someone, having them familiar with it, but that would actually be a 2026
Yeah.
focused thing. Uh, so for this year, the, the question that we're needing guidance on is, if a strategy is for us to go on and off with the metro standard and post it and, and communicate proactively, uh, option number two is continue with the status quo. Uh, both options are gonna generate frustrated folks who show up here. It's, it's just a matter of how we communicate clearly.
I say option one is a little more proactive, hopefully stop some of the issues.
I was gonna say, I asked the question if we had someone on staff, because would it make more sense to do this? Once we have someone on staff that can actually start enforcing that.
We've always done this, um, so I, I think it's, I don't think we have to have a specialized, I, I don't think it's, it's not related or unrelated to a commercial vehicle inspector. And then getting the clarity from when our officer is stopping them, um, you know, a lot of these trucks and delivery people are being dispatched from their local business and they, they go off of, you know, the zone and the general map that you've seen. And obviously, it's up to the driver to identify if a road is posted or not posted. Um, but it gets, it gets a little bit complicated for some of the, you know, it's a, it's a difference between a heavy hauler for a construction company and a high school kid who's delivering appliances. Um, and it gets complicated when their boss sends them out and they didn't see the sign, which they have an obligation to follow. Uh, but I think, um, you know, I think the option one with the, the posting ones as necessary and following along with the, the one assistance standard is a little bit easier.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, I have a number of folks out by me that are residents and have semis and those kind of things. Is there a plan to change the weight limits on any of the gravel roads out there?
No.
I think right now-
We're planning to do the same program we did last year, so I don't know if it was last year or the day before. We used to do four ton, we went to five ton. That's kind of a compromise with some like clarity.
The guys out-
It was a successful move.
Okay.
So we're really gonna mimic kind of the same program that just Jay alluded to. It's just a communication matter. Same thing, our actual road postings are very unlikely to change, especially in the short term.
The guys out by me, guys and gals out by me appreciated the five ton. If it goes to four, they'll come in and talk. They're, they gotta get their empty vehicles out and back home and stuff. And then the farm side, where we've got the dairy farm across the street, I think it's the last dairy farm. I think the, the other dairy farm's solely operational and is only gonna do cattle and no more dairy and stuff. That one milk truck, I'm assuming there's an agreement with that being egg and such that-
I believe there is some, yeah, I mean, whatever we've been doing is our process. Really, the only thing to talk, to complain is, do we change our notice? Do we change our website?
I'd, I'd go for, I'd go for number one then too, and, uh, as long as those, those folks could still do.
The, the only other comment that I want to add is, I want to reassure you that staff is doing a good job assessing roads. So we even had the conversation of our, our vulnerable infrastructure, should any of that be posted annually? And, uh, to some of the points that restricting it unnecessarily is a different kind of problem. And so those vulnerable roads that staff have identified that need to be taken care of annually, uh, they've been identified and then they continue to assess regularly to ensure that infrastructure is protect- protected. This is really the seasonal load limit issue, which is gonna happen here momentarily.
Yeah. Cool.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. On to eight B, Domino's vinyl wrap. Um, and the sake of time, we'll try to summarize. We've got a few options there for, we've all talked about the, the wrap on, on the kind of backend of the Domino's, uh, that's going up. Um, any preference from council on how we do that? I feel like there should be some mechanism where it's coming back to us. I'm a little hesitant to have it just be a total public vote, cause you guys live with, probably make vote phase or whatever.
Yeah, I, I was gonna suggest we consider sort of a hybrid of two and three, uh, where we do a community survey to identify themes, and the developer can submit designs. And maybe we also allow something like what we did for the logo design, maybe some kind of a formal contest. And then council can pick between the candidates. So the community gives input on what kinds of things should be included. And then we have the professional designers of Domino's, whoever they contract with, and then whoever else is interested in applying. So just to clarify, you're saying we at least know that we've got one design?
Yes.
Cause one of the challenges with contests is if you don't get any applicants, you don't have any options.
Right.
I, my, my thing is, I don't wanna see that on the, as a vinyl wrap. Uh, I, I'd rather be-
Be what?
A community, our, our logo. I love our logo and stuff, but I don't think it should be our logo.
Should be more artistic.
I, when I, when we were talking about this originally is, get your kids to do something and it looked-
When Jay, we kinda had a conversation-
Park design, something like that.
To Rockford schools.
I like your hybrid.
Or an art grant.
If any kids are interested in-
Have someone come in and actually do something on the call through an art grant.
Yeah, when, when the mayor and I met with the Rockford School District, uh, their elementary school is specifically an arts school.
There you go.
And so one of the things that we talked about is that might be a good candidate for a partnership. But also, I wanted to make sure that we're not relying on it, just in case it doesn't produce anything. We still have some options to make sure that we have something to action. It can be challenge, it might be challenging to scale something like that up from what a kid might do to, I don't know how big the cooler is, but there might need to be some-
It'll be a pretty good wall.
Tailoring of that.
Domino's-
Pretty large stick person.
It's Domino's building, but they said they'd do whatever.
It could even be part of the submitting of the concepts.
Yep.
They could submit a drawing as, as part of a concept. We give the, we s- we select from that to give to Domino's to come up with something incorporating those concepts.
I know the art teacher in Rockford does, uh, a, a project every year with her fifth graders.
Okay.
And that could be something that might be appealing to her. It'd be something very different that she's never done before. I could reach out to her.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great. Maybe let's hear what Michelle hears back and then, um, probably proceed with some hybrid Jeremy method.
Okay. All right, so the next step is, is, um, counselor Friedrich will reach out and then bring that back at a future council meeting?
Sounds good.
Perfect.
And then I also heard have, uh, Domino's work at proposing a solution with some feedback that we've backed up. So we've got an actionable-
Yeah, it's their building, so.
Yeah. So, so I, I heard making sure that we have one that isn't a student-driven one, and they can work parallel. Did I hear that correctly? What I was suggesting originally is, we use community engagement to pick a few themes. All themes, okay. And then based on the themes, we have a contest where council will choose. One of the applicants should be Domino's, with their designers going off of the community-generated themes.
And maybe another one's the fifth grade class.
And any number of fifth graders could certainly-
Maybe the other one's Logan. He can cover him in paint, see what comes up.
Yeah.
Fourteen months old. All right.
Natalie looks confused.
Yeah, and to, to clarify, do you want staff to move forward with getting a community survey drafted then? To identify themes and have distribute that to the community? Okay.
Sure, and then at the same time, reach out to the teacher and see what he hears back, and we can incorporate that in if they're interested.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Okay, on to new business, um, public comment opportunity. If anyone wanted to speak on that? I think we're good. Um, it is the Parks and Trails, uh, commission appointment. Um, Michelle and I met with, we had two really good candidates. Honestly think of both would have been great. Um, I had a quick question, Michelle. Do you remember what your term was through? Cause I think that-
End of February.
Yep.
End of February?
Yep.
This, um-
This year.
Mm-hmm. It was actually gonna be done here.
Should be a new three-year term?
Yes.
Three years?
So this term will run through February, uh, twenty twenty-eight.
Four years, is it three years?
Yeah, I don't remember. Um, well, we can maybe leave it ambiguous and staff can verify, uh, the, the term. But, anyway, we, um, we met with the two candidates, uh, the other day. And, uh, Michelle and I are going to recommend appointing, uh, Seamus, Seamish Walsh to the Parks and Trails Commission. Um, he's a, a newer resident in the Rush Creek Reserve neighborhood. Um, had some, some interesting, uh, and kind of exciting opinions on, on wanting to kind of be part of a lot of the parks and city park work that's going on. And, um, has a, has a little one, I believe, one or two years old, so it's kind of a exciting time for him to be able to shape some of that stuff. Um, I think he'd be a great candidate, so that is our recommendation to council. And, uh, if anyone has it, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to appoint-
Just real quick.
Yeah.
I, I tried to get this changed, the topic on nine A sheet of paper is planning commission appointment. That should say Parks, right?
Is that what it said?
Yeah, it still says planning commission.
Yep.
That was my mistake.
No, I just, I wanted to make sure-
Parks and Trails Commission.
Parks and Trails.
That's the staff report, that's not-
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
So if I could add one thing to, Mr. Mayor, a, a question came up on, uh, uh, the, Mr. Walsh had appro- applied previously for a different commission. And, uh, just, our practice has been, if we have an applicant that we're still holding on to, when we have any commission appointment come up, uh, we reach out to them. I just wanted to clarify for the public if there's a question about that. We reach out to them and make them aware of a new opening. Even though they may not have originally applied for Parks and Trails, they may have applied for a different commission. So for example, with the watershed, uh, this time last year, we had someone who had not applied for the watershed. And we had an appointment, we asked them. Uh, that's been the practice. I did want to ask the question, either before or after the vote. If that is a practice, council would like us to continue. So we're holding on to applications for folks who may or may not have applied. One way that we can correct that is, uh, we're making sure that the application is more general and, and not as specific.
I, I like the general application, and I like, typically, when I've interviewed candidates, I've asked them, if you're not selected, would you be interested in either future, if it's planning, you know, being, uh, automatically having your application go to the next planning vacancy, or if they're interested in anything. Like, that's what Seamus was, um, uh, having it be on file for any. And if they're not, then I would talk to staff and, and have that removed or not held on to. Um, but I like the flexibility of being able to keep people on file.
I-
I'd agree. Yep.
I'm okay with either one of them. I know Anthony did run for council. And, uh, the planning commission would be-
Yeah.
The opening there would be outstanding, so I'm, I'm a coin flip between both of them.
They're both, they're, neither one's a bad pick, for sure.
I just wanted to be transparent about the process and why, uh, Mr. Walsh had not, as we got applications, we already had an application on file for him, and so I wanted to be clear about that.
And, and kind of to your point, Dean, um, I know Anthony had, had run for council, which is great. And is definitely showing some interest. Uh, and Seamus had this, this was third or fourth, I think, commission opening. And he's been very active in terms of following up at meetings and-
I understand.
He's been, he's been really eager. I think, um, he'll be excited to, to get involved, so, yeah. If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to appoint Seamus, Seamish Walsh, that's a hard name to say with the S and the W, uh, to the Parks and Trails Commission for a term ending in-
February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight.
That date.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Staff updates.
I, I have two issues, Mr. Mayor. One, I got a question. Our marquees outside, sign outside, uh, still says community room. Uh, and then that was asked as a question. I went out just to inspect it today, cause, cause what I thought was the case, it is cut out. So it's like three-dimensional, so it's not very easy for us to cover it. If council would like us to do something proactively to cover it, uh, we could, we could find a solution to do that. But we haven't paid any attention to it, and so I just wanted to, there was a question about that, uh, this, this afternoon, or no, two days ago. Uh, a resident was in and was, um, was making some noise about the community room. Uh, and so that kind of raised visibility on, okay, it says that there's a community room, we do not have a community room. Is it appropriate for us to cover that up?
I think if we can do it in a way that looks okay.
Can I add something? So I was, I was one of the people that helped build the sign way back when with, um, Mike Pritchard. And so one of the benefits of that sign was you could easily replace that cover. So I would say get ahold of the company that originally built that display sign for us and see what the cost would be to have it redone.
We, we can do that easily. I just wanted to make sure that was something we wanted to do. I've, I've avoided the cost on it because, um-
I, I brought it up because Jessica made the comment that she was still getting calls about community center, didn't know what it was. And when I drove by the other day, I'm like, well, that's the last thing that I, I can understand.
We drive by something so much that you just goes into the back.
Just all of a sudden, it's like-
I never would have guessed that.
When did we put community room up there? I mean, it's just, it's been there since the beginning, so.
Well, we, we also had a resident come in and was talking about it.
I think it should be gone.
I'd say Michelle's option sounds good.
So I'll also, with that, if it meets his thresholds, we'll just take care of it.
Yep. Perfect.
Uh, the next thing that I wanted to make you aware of is, uh, next Wednesday is when we'll have our Moody's bond rating. I'd communicate that to you, but I wanted to say that out loud. Pretty, pretty important date for the city. Also, uh, as we've looked at our requirements, I, I told you that we're gonna sharpen the pencil and look at it. Uh, we've gone from six point four-five million, we've decreased it by two million seven hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. So the new bond ask is gonna be three million seven twenty-seven five twenty-six. Uh, we'll bring that back to council on March thirteenth, cause that's when we have to finalize the number. So it might change minorly between now and then, but, but we've done, staff's done a lot of hard work in order to make sure that we've identified requirements.
Fantastic.
So. Appreciate it.
Any council updates? Michelle?
Nope, I just have a comment.
Oh, go for it.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, on the council schedule, would it be possible to get like just short topics underneath each date? So we kind of have an idea of what's coming up?
I think usually there are.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's normal over the year.
Okay.
We, we can start doing that more proactively. And, and as we're talking about the schedule, uh, one of the things that remind- And, and as we're talking about the schedule, uh, one of the things, reminder, Monday, uh, we'll have strategic planning. My goal is to get you some read ahead tomorrow. Uh, it's been a pretty busy week, so I haven't been able to get that out to you, I apologize. But one of the things we're like, we've been talking about doing a tour of the facility. We're also reaching the window that we need to plan for a ribbon cutting. And so one suggestion is that we have a council meeting on April twenty-fourth. Is prior to that council meeting, to schedule the ribbon cutting. And you could also do a tour at that time. It's important to note, uh, we will not have a parking lot at that point. So it could potentially be a really muddy site. So the other alternative is for us to delay that and have the facility operating for a few months until we have a parking lot and schedule the ribbon cutting from then. So April twenty-fourth, or another alternative, what would be the desire of the council for us to schedule?
At what point do you think we'd have a parking lot?
I would say end of May, early June would be safe for coming around it. So it's another month, month or four or six weeks delay. I, I don't know how urgent it is.
Yeah.
Some of the pro.
I was trying to think, we want pictures and stuff.
If there's track in the facility, we'll clean it up, it's still under contract, so. If there's not urgency, I would recommend delaying.
I'd rather wait. I'd rather wait till it's nice.
Yep, I agree.
So, so for safety, uh, we'll probably schedule it for a, a time in June, just to make sure that we've got plenty of time.
Sounds good. Sounds good, sounds good. Only other thing I have is on the third, uh, remember pictures for Aaron for the website and newsletter and our little blurbs, um, with the questions while the city's sent out.
One more thing with the schedule, uh, if you could look, a reminder, League of Minnesota Cities Conference is in Duluth and it's on the schedule. It's gonna come down pretty quick and the rooms go very fast. So Nalisha's gonna send out an email. Uh, if you are interested, please respond to the affirmative, uh, so that she can book rooms and get you registered appropriately. Otherwise, it's very difficult to find someplace to stay up there.
With some really good information on Friday, Saturday. Both, both sessions were great.
Good. Sounds good, I'll, uh, keep an eye out for that email. Other than that, that's all we have. All entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Third, fourth, fifth, I.
Aye.